Hello everyone and welcome. Thank you so much for being here as we continue. And for some of you, it will be your first time working on the strategic plan. Just before we begin, Tom has been going through and helping with some of this. But you need to enter your name and your vision area. This will help us because you're going to be put into small groups and we're going to do it by vision area. So he has been doing it as well. But you click on your name as a participant and then just click rename and you can type your name and your area. Make sure you mute. My dogs are going to start. Sorry about that. I have every window closed in the whole house. So you won't need to have your cameras until we get into small groups. Tom, will you take over for a second?
Yes, so as Jenny said, you're not going to need them until you get into small groups. But and we'll let you know when that is and you can turn those on. But definitely if you haven't done so, if you could, just rename and add your group to that. It will help us when we go to put you in groups with the number of folks. We more quickly get you into those breakout rooms. It won't matter for the first breakout room, but it will matter for the second breakout room that we do.
Great. Now everybody's unleashed, so hopefully that will help. As we go, including right now, you can use the chat feature if you have any issues or need help. We'll be keeping an eye on that. As anytime you're in a meeting like this, make sure that you're on mute. Those are the keys. So we're going to be working on indicators of success. And some of you have been with us on several meetings and some of you are starting just for the first time. So we wanted to just do a brief introduction. I'm Jen Hensley, a former middle school teacher assistant superintendent. I've worked at Olentandu Schools. I was assistant superintendent there. I also was chief academic officer at Treka. Personally, I love Harry Potter and those are the three noises you hear in the background, Hope Luna and Harry. That's Harry dressed as Harry Potter. Tom?
Excellent. Thank you. And hopefully you won't hear my dogs. I think they're locked far enough away that you shouldn't hear them. But Tom Frye, 26 years in education, started out in the secondary level, high school math and science. And then I've had about every role up through assistant superintendent. I worked in small rural districts like West Jefferson, in urban settings, Afrocentric when they first became a high school. And then eventually in more suburbs, Olentandu Local Schools where I was the director of data research and accountability for about 10 years. And Bramville, I examined village schools as assistant superintendent. So, welcome.
And Tom and I, our company is called Dynamics. Our whole goal is to help have really good process. So meetings are shorter and decisions stick and they take less time, but we get more done. So that's our overarching goal of the business. Somebody needs to make sure they mute. Okay, so I wanted to bring you all up to speed of where we are in the whole process. The steering committee met multiple times and provided input. And you'll see tonight for the process, you will not be wordsmithing or creating from scratch. Our goal is to provide processes where everybody gets an opportunity, equal opportunity to participate. And we gather all of that input and then we go and do work behind the scenes. So we took all of that input from the steering committee and created the mission and vision statements. Drafts were created and then a survey was created which went out to the broader public and stakeholders. And feedback was gathered. I'm going to let Tom talk about this because it was some of our most positive, exciting results we've ever had in this process. So I'm going to let him talk a little bit about it.
Yeah, definitely. Thank you. So, yes, so we had over 280 unique responses across various groups. Students, staff, parents and community members. The largest was parents. That makes sense. Smallest was students. There were only a handful of students who participated. But if you look at the results, what you notice is that overwhelmingly with the two highest choices that folks could select, agree or strongly agree, were at over 90%. And actually, the lowest one, I think, was around 91% for any one of them for any particular group. And so, and honestly, even for those who chose like disagree, the small percentage who chose disagree, typically it was around some word that they had an issue with it. They preferred it to be this word or that word. And so typically, we tell folks, we're looking for, if we can get 80%, if we get 80% or more of folks feeling strongly about our vision areas and our mission, then we're in a good place. We're never going to get all folks to agree on things. But again, really strong results. Folks really seem to connect to both the mission and the vision areas. So, oh, go ahead Jenny, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to also say then, so then we took a look at all of the comments that were shared, went through them. And there were some minor tweaking suggestions, but for the most part, people were happy with the statements as they stood. So the statements you're going to see tonight are the ones that did go out in the survey.
And so just our process for this next step is we start to think about success indicators. And so those indicators of success are important because that's how we start to measure how we're doing as, or how you're doing as a district in regard to those vision areas so that we meet that mission. And so what's going to happen tonight, you're going to provide input. From that input, and we're going to do it a couple of different ways. First, we're going to bring you, we're giving you an opportunity to look at these areas and brainstorm and think about how you would go about trying to measure them. And really, shoot for the stars. Don't worry about if it's difficult to maybe capture this measurement or it might be hard. That's not a big deal. We'll figure those pieces out, but we just want you to think. And we'll start first from a more global perspective. While you've all selected a particular vision area that's your passion, we're giving you an opportunity to be in a mixed group where you can hear multiple perspectives on thoughts for any of the areas. And so we're giving you a night, a time to just brainstorm and think about just any one area. We'll collect that feedback and then we'll get you into your breakout groups with just those folks that are in your area. So just student learning, just culture, et cetera. But tonight, we'll be collecting that feedback. From that feedback, we'll actually create drafts. And then, once those drafts are created, we'll have an opportunity to put those drafts in front of you to collect additional feedback. And then eventually, the superintendent and administration will then finalize those indicators of success. So that's how this process will work and a short overview of what today will look like tonight. So I just want to give you a moment to take a look at. These are the final versions of the mission and then those four vision areas with descriptors. So I'll give you just a second to kind of read over those. Okay, so what I've done is in the chat, I actually put a PDF. It's going to be a few pages. It's actually, the first page should be this slide. So that you have it with you as you go into our breakout rooms and we start to have some conversations, some dialogue around these. I know it's going to be hard just to memorize them, so you'll have those. So if you would, just go ahead and make sure that you can download that. It should be in the chat now for everyone. And if you're having any struggles, just let us know in the chat that you can't access it and we'll work to work through that. So we're going to go ahead and Jenny, just go ahead and move forward. So what we want to start with is we want to try to get as many perspectives as possible. When we think about, how are we going to know if we're successful in each of these vision areas? So outcomes, we're thinking about outcomes. How can we go about measuring how we're doing in these areas? So what I want you to do is just take a few moments. And I want you to think about what might be the how, how we go about measuring each of these four vision areas. And so I just want you to write down your thoughts about it. It could be something specific of, oh hey, we could use this to measure it. Or it can just be sort of your thoughts around it. So I'm going to give you a few moments to think and try to at least come up with one thought, one idea for each of those areas. And then we're going to put you into a breakout room. It'll be just a few people, two or three folks. They probably won't be connected to your specific area. But just so we can start to get different perspectives, thinking, just the idea of just brainstorming about some thoughts about how we might go about measuring before we put you into those other breakout groups. So I'm just going to quiet here and give you a few moments to think about that and write down your thoughts. Okay, so you've had a few moments now to kind of jot down some thoughts of what those outcomes might look like. And ideally, you have one idea for each of those areas. What we're going to do now is we're going to put you into some mixed breakout rooms. And like I said, it'll be small numbers of folks and we're going to give you about seven minutes. And so the process is going to be to just have a dialogue and take some time and have each person share at least one idea, one thought about how we might go about measuring our level of success for each of those four vision areas. So we're giving you some time. And again, this is just a way to brainstorm, get our minds thinking and hear from a lot of different perspectives before we start to think just about our groups specifically.
So Jenny, go ahead. I was going to say, you'll receive an invitation. I'm going to open up the rooms. And if you get kicked out, just jump back in. We'll get you into a group. And once you get in the group, hang out there for a few minutes because sometimes it takes people a bit to accept the invitation.
So the purpose of this first "I have a dream" was just to get your minds thinking and start to hear some different perspectives before you move into, we move you into your specific visionary groups. But I also wanted to go ahead and walk through an example because I know that it might be difficult for some of us to think through, you know, what some of those outcomes might be. So the first thing I want to walk through is a business example. So Jenny, go ahead and move to the next slide. So if we can think about a business, a business might have four vision areas. And those might be profits, growing their network, team satisfaction, so the folks that actually work within the company, and then client satisfaction, those folks who they provide services to. And so if those are their vision areas, just an example here from a business perspective of how they might go about measuring these things. So under profit, maybe it's meeting revenue targets for each quarter. When it comes to growing their network, maybe they have some expectation of at least, you know, 5% new clients within a quarter. And then when you think about the satisfaction of their actual team, maybe it's a survey result where they're looking for at least 80% of their team members to rate those, whatever the number of questions are, in the highest two ratings. And with their clients, something similar, maybe it also would be a survey where they're looking for, again, those highest ratings in regard to their satisfaction of whatever their service they're providing us as a business. So you have some examples of some hard, sort of hard data points, you know, revenue targets. Those are your yeses or no's. We met them or we didn't. And then you have some more, so those maybe people might think of soft data when it comes to sort of surveys and getting sort of people's perspectives or, you know, those perceptions of what's going on. So just want to have that for you as maybe one piece that helps you. Also then, I want to talk through sort of when it comes to the specific vision areas that we have. You can go ahead and forward Jenny. Oh, so again, when we think about how we know that we'll be successful with our specific vision areas. And again, you have this slide in your PDF as well as the business example. Go ahead, next slide Jane. So I wanted to help prime the pump a little bit when it comes to thinking about some potential outcomes. It doesn't need to be these things, but I want to give you some examples of what some other districts have used and just some potential of what you might use. So some folks might think with student learning, one thing we might use are some of the local report card data that exists. So the state every year reports out certain things like achievement data. Could be things like the indicators that are met. Maybe it's around things like performance index, which is a weighted measure of overall performance for students. Maybe it's on student growth, so how much progress kids are making within certain subjects. So there's all kinds of things on the local report card that might be things to consider when it comes to student learning. Also, on the qualitative end of things, maybe it's around student surveys. Maybe there's a develop a survey or maybe there already is a survey that exists within the district that could help give some, at least proxy of how student learning is being impacted in a positive way. And then finally, another example might be looking at learning opportunities. How many different learning opportunities exist for students? So just some ideas of some potential things that might help. When it comes to culture, oops, sorry Jane, hop back one more time there. So with culture, maybe it's around staff, student, parent, community surveys. Maybe we look at attendance rates of students and staff as a proxy of what our culture looks like. Communication could be things like social media metrics. Maybe we track the difference, eventually when we have open door events again, you know, things like parent-teacher conferences, open houses, things like that. What type of participation happens and how that might be an opportunity for communication? As well as the potential for our parents' community surveys. And then with fiscal responsibility, you know, there are fiscal forecasts, information that exists. Annual audits for every district happens, so those results. And based on how well the district is doing from a fiscal standpoint, there are actually financial awards that are given out each year. So it doesn't have to be any of these things, but I wanted to give some more tangible examples for each of these areas. So now what I'm going to do is, once we're going to put you into your specific groups, give you some extended time to start having some conversation about what those outcomes might look like. And the process that we want you to use, and again, this is also in that PDF, so you don't have to memorize it, is that we're going to take turns. We want to make sure we hear all voices within the groups. And there are group leaders for each of these areas. And so really, when you come to your time to share, we want you to try to share, you know, in a minute or less. So no one person is dominating all the time that we have. And when people are sharing initially, try not to have any interruptions, no cross-talk. Let's first just get an opportunity for people to sort of lay out what those potential outcomes might be. And when it's my turn, you know, if someone's already shared something, now I just want to share those things that are new ideas. And then once we're finished, everyone's had that opportunity to share out their thinking, then we can start to have a dialogue across those common themes or just whatever those ideas and thoughts that came up, we can expand on those or start to talk through those. So that'll be our process. And Jenny, do you have those invites ready for those specific rooms?
Yes, I do. And I just wanted to remind everybody too, you'll be sharing in the group and hearing and you're going to be listening and thinking about what your final response is going to be. In the end, you're going to have an opportunity to share individually for you on a survey. And that's what we will use to create the drafts. So this is an idea, this is an opportunity for you, hear from others, shape your thinking, maybe hear some other good ideas. We're going to leave you in these groups for a little bit longer. It's probably going to be about 12 to 15 minutes because some of the groups are bigger, like nine people. So we'll do that. I'm going to open all the rooms and then if you, for some reason, are in the wrong room, I think I have everybody right, but if you're in the wrong room, just jump out and we'll get you in the right room. And of course, if you're knocked out, then just jump out and we will jump back in.
Okay, Jenny, I think everyone's back. Is that right?
Yep, everybody's back.
Excellent. So what we want to do is just be able to have an opportunity to have a conversation, to start thinking about, you know, what those potential outcomes might look like. And so just like to, so everyone can kind of get a sense, kind of peek behind the curtains of, you know, what those conversations look like in the other groups. What we're going to do is have folks just share sort of a one-minute summary of kind of some of those big rocks or common themes that came up for your groups. So can we start with student learning?
And that is Damon.
Damon, excellent, thank you.
Yeah, hopefully you can hear me. Yeah, we had a good conversation. I really think we talked about a few things. One are recognizing that if our indicator of success with student learning is recognizing that providing all students with engaging and innovative curriculum, as how it's written. Not all students are feeling engaged with just traditional curriculum. And yes, that's part of what we teach. That's part of what students learn. However, one of the things with measuring that success is are we providing opportunities younger than high school for students to experience different types of learning, whether that's STEAM, whether that is something that is more connected to the trades? And then, and that was something that was part of our conversation. Also, how do we celebrate and recognize success of students, not just academically? So students are learning, students are growing in first grade. Students are learning and growing in many ways throughout their K to 12 experience. And how do we celebrate that? How do we recognize that and trying to find ways to do that? We also talked about, there is, obviously in today's world, there's a heavy emphasis on local report cards. Certainly, that's one measure. But does that really capture everything about our students and the learning that's taking place? And how can we, how do we do that in the classroom and how do we do that on a daily basis rather than just one time a year? And so those were some of the pieces that we talked about. And anybody in our group, feel free to jump in if I missed something with that.
Hey Tom, communication is Susan.
Okay, excellent.
Hi, everybody. We talked about making sure your message gets across without overwhelming people. And these days, things get really buried really quickly in email inboxes. So how can we get it out to folks and also have it accessible? So we talked about some type of app, using push notifications, texting, things such as our class dojos, seesaw. Get better responses in that. It's right there on your phone and you see it right away. And I'm sure we have some tools like School Messenger and things, but an app where people could access a map, a parking, you know, things that they can then refer back to when they know where to go. And also then engaging with the community with that. Maybe there's tiers on that app. Some of it's student accessible, some of it's, if I'm just a community member for athletics, could be on there. So exploring some of that and maybe even potentially getting our students involved with that app development and maintaining some of that communication. Is that, did I communicate okay? My communication?
Yes.
Or again, throw in anything else?
Thank you so much. Go ahead.
The only other thing that she did mention was that when we talked about gauging how responsive it is, an app is extremely, it's very easy to get those numbers. You can see how many times someone clicks something and how many times someone opens something.
Yeah, we definitely talked about something with analytics or metrics that tells you, did it get bounced back and that kind of thing as well. Yeah, thank you Heather.
Thank you. Our next group is culture and that is Dennis.
Alrighty, our group, we did a lot of discussion about kind of defining what some of the, you know, things in the statement, you know, what really is caring, what is being diverse and inclusive environment. That a lot of work would have to be done with the different groups, you know, when you need to speak with the students, you need to speak with the parents, you need to speak with the staff. And kind of figure out what exactly is they think that looks like. So you kind of ask them and then we do some things. And then of course, you follow up with a survey to see if we're actually hitting the mark with the culture. We talked a little bit about, you know, of course, relationship building is so important, the social emotional piece of the culture. And then we also brought up the importance of all three of the buildings working together. We sometimes do some things with culture that's just at the elementary or just at the middle school. We need to communicate a little bit better, work a little bit more together and get it through the entire K to 12 building. If I missed anything, my group, go ahead and speak up.
All right, thank you. Fiscal Responsibility, Colette.
Actually, this is Becky. Colette had to jump away for a minute, so I will go ahead and share what we talked about. We talked about that fiscal responsibility was twofold. It was responsibility and transparency. And so obviously, the five-year forecast is part of that and auditors and that kind of thing. But we talked about a survey to get information in terms of the transparency especially. We also talked about 30-second videos, students doing videos on, like, understanding different components of school finance and then posting those. And same thing that the other group talked about in terms of the views, looking at how many views there are. And just involving students overall to educate. We talked about levies and historical data to see, you know, how often we need to go for levies and then just the accountability for how that money is spent. Anybody want to chime in if I left anything out there?
Great, thank you. That's it, Tom.
Excellent, thanks. I really appreciate those summaries, just to give folks kind of a sense of some of the things you were talking about. And so what we want to do now though, is we want to give you an opportunity to capture all the thoughts that folks had. And so there is a link to a survey. And it should hopefully give you plenty of typing room this time. I made adjustments from last time. So feel free to give us your specific thoughts in regard to what some of those outcomes might look like for each of those vision areas. So you have the opportunity to provide feedback in each and every vision area. But of course, you don't have to. So if you didn't have some thoughts that you felt really strongly about in a particular area, it's okay to leave it blank. But just want to give you that opportunity right now, what we have you, to go ahead and fill out that survey. And so we'll just give you a few moments to do that.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Hensley and Dr. Frye. Hopefully you can hear me okay. I was still finishing up my survey. So I would like to also thank all of you for your participation in this process. We've had a really great turnout during both of our first two sessions. I know for those of you that are continuing on... I know for those of you that are continuing on with us tonight and those that are new, uh, your feedback and your input is incredibly valued, valuable to this process. And, um, you know, we really are, are very appreciative of the time that everyone is committed to, to this. Uh, we, this entire, uh, process was obviously coming to a close. We'll need additional feedback from you, uh, as these drafts are, are provided. And then just so that this group knows, um, the plan for this moving forward is to, uh, work through this over the next couple of weeks and get, get to some finality. Um, the draft of this strategic plan is intended to be shared with the board and the public at the February 3rd work session. So we do have about a two, almost three week timeline that we're working on here to, uh, to get that draft, uh, ready for the board and for the public to view. As we are again, looking forward to what this will mean for us in the future as far as direction. And, uh, the, the way in which we will be moving forward as a district. So, and again, I'd like to thank all of you for your participation and giving of your time. Uh, we do, uh, we do thank you once again and we look forward to sharing the, the drafts of this, uh, when they become available here, I would say probably next week or so. Right Jenny?
That is correct. And just as looking even beyond that, um, the idea is that your groups, um, continue to meet a couple of times a year to just check in, see where your area is and make updates. So that it'll be a continuing thing. So. So again, thank you everybody. Have a fantastic evening and, uh, we will have drafts for you soon. Bye, everybody.